I'm not hungry.
I'm gonna squeeze in behind you, Dwayne.
She's, I mean, she's ninety-five, she's fine.
Thank you very much.
How deep was that?
Oh, they just redid it, the deepest part of it is seventeen feet.
Seventeen, really?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. And then they dug it out, they redid it.
They dug it, terrorists did it.
It's seventeen feet on the deep end and it's, I wanna say four maybe four and a half feet up at this skinny end over there. Where the big rock is.
Supposedly let us put some divers in there.
Sure.
Okay. Just, you know, do I deal with you or just call Mrs. Shell?
You just go knock on the door and talk to her. She said, you have to realize somebody's, she really wishes all the day she's.
Them's everybody.
I'm not with any.
She's a.
He's sitting just a minute, he's not wanting anything.
I don't think you're being a problem.
I'm just saying, I owe you a bit of this.
I mean, I still owe you one.
That's a greeting, sir.
That's just a new bottle.
Yeah. Well, if you owe me one, you wanna bring one, son, and bring it from the fire station, cause yours is bigger than their fire station.
Yeah, yeah.
They are bigger.
Twenty-four ounces.
Yeah, you got twenty-four ounces at the fire station.
These are only twenty ounces.
They're still our X P.
Well, that kinda like machine owners get out big boys.
We oughta try and get one of them over here. Is that what they, they changed the bottle des- design or whatever to catch you back on that?
But they didn't raise your price.
Didn't raise your price.
Hmm, yeah. Oh. They got the new, uh, twenty-four ounce cans of Mountain Dew now and stuff. I was in one of the convenience stores last week and the guy's going, I was buying, they had these like three for three dollars. And everything, I was getting that and he goes, he goes, yeah, I get the cans, good deal on the cans and everything, and I said, well, I wanna be able to seal it back up, you know, and everything. But if you go with the cans, they had a special on them, but probably the twenty-four ounce can, it gets warm pretty quick, you know. I mean, it gets cold quick, but also it gets warm quick, you know. Once you open it, you don't have any way of sealing the can back up, so.
Have we got any storms coming?
Fifty-five.
Have we got storms coming at six?
Fifty-five Barb Avenue, I follow, I'm almost sure.
At six o'clock, we've got water rescue does here.
There's one house on there.
Got the rescue team coming in.
Looks to me like they haven't cut the grass.
Oh, well, sure, it'll wait right till they get.
I mean, I'm gonna, I'm running the training tonight, so I don't care if it's raining, but I don't want them in if it's gonna.
One thousand, one hundred and fifty.
What if you don't have rescue when it's starting?
Now, we pull them off the water. I'm not worried about divers, I just don't want to flood the filter.
You been asking that?
Yeah, I mean, with the pool, putting it up on the second, we don't wanna flood the filter.
That's good.
But.
People can't believe it.
Yeah, they're married.
Ask him.
So you're gonna see.
The equipment will buy here.
For what then?
Uh, over at the, the rescue teams coming at six o'clock and gonna turn up here.
What you do, like throw pennies in the bottom of the pool so the guys dive down to get the pennies and quarters off the bottom?
That would, that would really help us, they'd, they'd go in there, that's pretty deep, that's pretty deep.
This is just, this is the perfect, it just, you can see the divers and the, the divers, it builds confidence, just swimming the rope patterns. You know, everything is usually black water and so.
All the signals.
Is a long thing, so you get them swimming half moons and maybe working side by side like you would a river.
You wouldn't be able to see where the water is.
Oh, no, and, and that, working black water is what it's all about anyway, it's all about feeling, and that's the way that's fighting fire really, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
You can't see your hand in front of your face and so you're throwing and feeling, same thing, it's just in a different environment.
Well, thermo imager work and like if you had a cold pond, you had a body in there, would you be able to see the warm body, you can't, is not enough difference in temperature?
Window glass, water.
Oh, it reflects it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, no, it, it won't, uh, pick up a, a body.
Even if it's outside of the vehicle?
Now, if, if, if you have a person air wise, if you, like that guy that was, uh, that night, uh, looking for the, the guy from the nursing home out in the woods or whatever, it'll pick up radiant heat. Once you break into the wall. And if you're standing on the other side of that window glass.
I'll take one, you have the back.
And I got a thermo imager.
I'll take one of this.
One of this and I'll pass them both back to you.
Agenda.
So, I'm gonna get out of here. Give Johnny anything he wants.
What are you here for?
Nothing, I just stopped.
Give him anything he wants, cause he wants the water.
We were having a, there.
Another one of those.
Yeah, he needs it, John.
Yeah, of course. Thank you for talking.
Brian made or made up water.
It's hard to fill a pool.
Exactly.
I'll give you a call sometime. Okay.
How long will he be?
Huh? Hour. What's that?
Giving the tour?
Oh.
I'll pay you.
She's, depends on how long he wants to talk, but thirty minutes would do.
I kept an extra one of them.
Well, we're not gonna stretch you.
I'm here to pay the money. Okay.
Will? An hour and a half.
I'll pay it, but you're gonna put it back up.
Is there one time better?
That's, yeah.
Mid morning.
That's how I.
Um.
Regardless.
Yeah. Usually mid morning, I don't even.
I don't care, it, it might happen, and it might never happen again.
Chief, we gonna get seen in a wet suit today?
No. You don't wanna see me.
That's where you need to take your cam.
Exactly.
Weight for maturity roots.
I don't say about five pounds and a ten.
Seems like that was ten pounds or five pounds.
I got an office, I was going down on a fuck high lake, three or four years.
Yeah, she said something about you were.
He was like second half out of water. Okay, see you later.
See you, chief.
See you, dude.
Hi, John.
I got it.
I'm okay, Harry.
Not ready, bud.
Yeah. I'll see you later.
Yes, I got it.
You got the other thing.
Yep.
Free, sir, how are you?
Ladies, ladies?
That would be really.
Oh, I was gonna tell you, Mark.
Five thirty, we'll get the public service meeting.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
All right.
Get it, chill, and start playing that game.
Start out with the delinquent utility accounts and, uh, there was one for, at fifty-five Barb Avenue for two hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. And, uh, that'll be reported to be a prison county auditor reflection. Anybody wants to look at that? Uh, the second item is the sewer backup policy, uh, that I've been working on. And, uh, what it is, is kind of a hybrid of what we've had in the past plus a lot of, uh, statements in there that, uh, Dave Morrison liked, uh, dealing with, um, attorney type words and basically saying that we're not responsible, but, but, so, uh, this is kind of summary and I, I have a complete copy of it, everyone's got a complete copy of it. Sanitary sewer, sewer backup policy procedure, but I'm gonna go ahead and read the brief summary of everything. Uh, the city of Heath, despite the absence of any legal duty to provide assistance to property owners who have been damaged by sewer backups, desires to provide some assistance to citizens who have incurred sewer backups for health and safety reasons. The city of Heath will aid those who have sewer backups by assisting with the expenditures of cleanup of properties that have encountered sewer backups. To promote the timely cleanup after a sewer backup and to provide limited assistance to its citizens damaged by sewer backups, the city of Heath establishes a program offering limited financial assistance to those damaged property owners or renters. The term and condition of the city's no fault sewer backup reimbursement policy for those properties that experience sewer backups are as follows. For the purpose of this policy, the term no fault means the city will pay to a property owner up to three thousand dollars for the cleanup cost of the following sanitary sewer backups irrespective of whether the city was negligent or legally liable for those damages. The utilities director will report the sewer backup to the mayor, the mayor will review the request for funds and would determine if the applicant is eligible to receive the funds. The mayor would receive council's authority to handle costs up to three thousand dollars per incident. A catastrophic occurrence exceeding three thousand dollars would be handled by council action. An annual report shall be made to the city council outlining the number of applicants, applications for assistance, a description of the cases involved, and a total cost of payment made. For the purposes of this policy, the term sewer backup means any backup of sewage from a city owned and maintained sanitary sewer or sewer force main system. What that means is it has to be coming from our sewer, there couldn't be a backup in their lateral, in other words, if they flood themselves, we wouldn't be responsible for that. The city policy is intended to reduce the health hazards by cleaning up as quickly as possible and to reduce the frequency and severity of sewer backup claims. Does anybody have any specific questions or additions, uh?
Well, I, I just have a suggestion, just because when I, I'm looking at this, when I'm, I'm looking at cleanup assistance application.
Okay.
And it says, please ask for a complete copy of the sewer backup policy, and I'm wondering if we should say, I acknowledge that I received a copy because this more clearly outlines, because otherwise they sign this and they come back and say, well, you, you know, this does, you're, you're liable, so we need more money.
Yeah, we can do that.
So I'm just thinking it clears up that the full policy.
So put on there, I have received a copy.
Yeah, that's what I would do. Oh, that's one good.
John, I.
Please, just please ask for a complete copy, and I'm just saying, we should say, I acknowledge I received a copy.
My firm belief is.
So that they're signing that they received this full policy.
If we're gonna pay out this month regardless, I, I'd say that we'll pay it. But they also will put in a backup preventer, backflow preventer. I don't care, you know, it might never happen to that individual property again, but I think that.
What's that?
Something that should be, you know, as a, as a prelude of them getting the money, that we say, you get the money, but you're also, there's gonna be a backup preventer for the. Yeah, I just.
Let me ask you a question, though.
Is that a backup preventer?
Now, I.
That, you can have backflow.
What it is, is a, it's a check valve, basically, yeah. What I let, allowed in here for was, and, and, uh, it, it, I left it up to the utilities director's discretion. Uh, that's what I stated in there, and the only reason is I did that, I think most of the time the utilities director probably will make that happen upon maybe even advice from the mayor. He may say, you know, I don't mind paying this, but they're getting a, you know, and in order to, they make, it specifically says that in this policy that it's the utilities director's discretion to do that, but I've known people that have lived in the house for, they lived in the house for thirty years, had one backup. Yeah. And, and whether or not, you know, we wanna make them put a backup on that, I don't know, you know, I mean, that, it's, it's kind of.
Here's the other thing too, Doug. When a backup happens, obviously you want the cleanup to begin right away. It doesn't take very long at all for the cleanup and the billing of that cleanup to take place, okay? So, if, if we're gonna help pay for the cleanup, and that cleanup's happening right away, it's highly unlikely that somebody would be able to install a check valve before we would get the bill for the cleanup. So, um, it would make it difficult to require that the check valve be installed prior to.
No, 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 no.
The cleanup being paid for.
That isn't really what I mean, maybe I made my mistake. I'm saying that if we pay for it regardless, then we say that a check valve will be, you know, you're gonna get the money, we're gonna pay for it, but also we want a check valve put in place. I don't care, when you put it in place after the cleanup, that's fine, but I'm just saying.
We would want the cleanup, I'm sorry, we'd want the check valve put in place, but how do we require that to happen? The cleanup's done, cleanup bill's paid, hey, you need a check valve, okay, fine, and then the check valve never gets put in. So how do we, how do we enforce that?
You know, if it's like a reoccurring problem, like let's say, yeah, let's say it's the problem that we have most recently had, where we know that they've had problems in the past, we can state right there, before we even start cleanup, saying, you know, we'll agree to paying this money out, but you have to put a backflow preventer in to receive the money for us to pay for this cleanup. I mean, we could do that.
Okay.
That's the only. The policy will reimburse the property owner up to three thousand dollars for cleanup costs if all of the following conditions are met. A backup must have resulted from a condition in the city sewer system or lines and not caused by a backup caused by a clog or other problems in the property owner's own line or sewer lateral. It is not one of the situations specifically excluded by this policy. That's thrown in there, that's an attorney deal. The utilities director will determine if the property owner needs to install a backflow preventer in order to receive the three thousand dollar payout. Or we can put mayor, I mean, I could put whoever, whatever we wanna do with it.
Okay.
That's up.
Yeah.
Lost or damaged personal property as a result of the sewer backup event is not covered under this policy. A property owner can either make a claim to their insurance company or file a claim with the city's liability insurer.
Okay, yeah. All right. I, I have one question, John, in, in item number two, cause we make a, we, we, we mentioned maybe once or twice prior to that. That we will, uh, pay up to three thousand dollars. We mentioned that in, in, in item number one, then we mentioned it in item number two, you know, up to three thousand per incident. And then right after that, it says, a catastrophic occurrence exceeding three thousand would be handled by council action. Now, I guess my question there is, we're saying that, that, that we will pay the cleanup costs up to three thousand dollars. Well, then if we're saying that if a catastrophic occurrence exceeding that will be handled by council action, um, I, 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 I'm, I'm not sure then what that does to the three thousand limit that we're setting, because we're saying the mayor would receive council authority to handle costs up to three thousand dollars per incident, and it says, now.
This is how, this is how I read it, and you tell me, I mean, maybe I'm not saying it right, but basically council's giving you approval for each incident up to three thousand dollars. We maybe get one of these a year, we may not get any in a year, the most I've ever seen was two a year, okay? They're giving you permission for three thousand dollars per incident, but if there's something catastrophic like, uh, uh, a major something, it may involve something that someone's came in and said, hey, is there any help that you can do for me on this thing? If it exceeds three thousand dollars, it has to have council's approval. That's, that's way, the way I'm looking at it, even if it's a cleanup, let's say it's cleanup for fifteen thousand dollars, or we know it's gonna exceed that three thousand dollars and it's an enormous amount, now you can just, we can cut that out if you want.
Now, I, I understand what you're saying there.
Yeah.
I read the sentence, the mayor would receive council authority to handle costs up to three thousand dollars per incident. I read that sentence to mean that each time there's an incident, uh, and of course, then I'm, the mayor would be made aware of it, and then the mayor would get council authority to handle it on each and every incident. What you're saying is, what, what you're saying is, the intent of this is, is that by approval of the policy, council is approving for three thousand dollars to pay per incident, and that if there should be something that is over and above that, then council could take a look at that on a case by case basis.
But you have, you have total control of doing it up to the three thousand.
Up to the three thousand dollars.
If we okay that, then you've got the green light to go ahead.
See, that, that, that wasn't the way that I read that sentence, but I understand, I understand what you're saying now.
Does that make, does that read that way to you?
I mean, all you could say is.
I, I agree with John.
What's that, explain, no, I mean, what it means is, is that, um, that with approval of this policy, that council is authorizing the payment of up to three thousand dollars if you have a backup.
For cleanup of.
If there should be a backup that's beyond that cost, then the council would have to address that individually, similar to how we did this past incident.
Exactly.
Yeah. And the backup must have resulted from a condition in the city's sewer system or lines and not caused by a backup caused by a clog or other problem in the property owner's own line or sewer lateral. So it's gotta be out in our line.
Public system.
Yes.
Like that ball that you showed us, that soccer ball or whatever.
Yeah.
That was in the main.
That was in our main.
Okay.
So the main, from the main back to my house, if it occurs there, do I get the three thousand?
No, that's your lateral. That's your lateral.
How, how do you know where it's at?
That's what we do, is when someone has a plug in their house, we go out and immediately start checking our mains in front. If the water's flowing, then it's in your lateral. If it's backing up in our, in our manholes and stuff, then it's in our system.
Okay, and then they go and they flush out the clog that's in the main.
Yeah.
I got several things. Uh, first, can anybody submit a bill up to three thousand dollars? In other words, in here, it doesn't say you will use a certain company or an approved company or anything like that. So if I send a bill in and say I had Jeff and Joe's cleaning company come in and here's the bill for three thousand, are you gonna pay it? Whether it costs Jeff and Joe three thousand or it costs me three thousand?
Jeff and Joe, is that a company or?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
He made up Jeff and Joe.
I'm just saying, you know, two guys in a truck, I mean, you know, I have a sewer backup and they, and you said, and, and.
If you've ever been on any of these, first of all, a lot of times people clean them up and they never say a word to anybody, cause they don't want anyone to know about it. Okay, we'll cut, they'll call, we'll come out, they don't want anyone, they don't wanna, they just don't want anyone to know that they had sewer backup in their house.
Right.
Lot of times that happens, we never hear a word.
Right.
Then there's other times, believe me, when, when, when there's a sewer backup, they're on the phone and they're wanting someone to get in there and clean, and they usually.
Okay, okay.
Have an outside company that does it.
All right, but any outside company, it doesn't matter who, if, if they submit you a bill, it could be A B C company, X Y Z, whatever.
Well, first of all, I have to know, we, you know, I have to be there and see the damage, like I do on every sewer backup, they, first person in the scenario usually is me.
Okay, but okay, but it's David or anything, and you say, you say, yeah, the sewer's backed up and, and, and they say, okay, I'm gonna get Joe and Paul to come in here and clean it up.
Somebody.
And everything, yeah, I got a friend, a friend, know somebody and everything, and, and all of a sudden they look at this policy and they say, you know what? Should've paid three thousand bucks, if I got their price, it's gonna be three thousand dollars, it's gonna be two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-five cents, or something like that. And everything, and every, I think, A B C, I mean, any company that does it, they would go to Heath, they would have a report and know that you were kept to three thousand. I can see him showing up on the job and saying, oh, this is a Heath one, it's, uh, it's gonna be at least three thousand bucks to, to clean it.
He's got a point, because I know we had a, a program at our office where we would pay for car repairs for people to get to work, and we had a limit. And it started becoming, every car repair was within dollars of that limit. So what we had to do was, we had to do an R S P and we had to get approved providers, because we didn't want the shade tree mechanics coming in and saying, it's fifteen hundred dollar limit, it's fourteen ninety-nine, and so that would happen.
So I mean, so, so what's the solution?
Well, the, the, the solution to one is either don't put an amount, put a lower amount and it can go higher, or it has to be by an approved cleanup company. I mean, if there are certain cleanup companies in Lickin County, then it'd be like, you know, and they have set rates at so much per square foot, or, you know, I mean, where you can actually look, here's our itemized list, they're not, they're not gouging Heath person compared to North person, because they need, they need get three thousand.
Here's my question though with that, Tim.
Okay.
We have an approved list of three or four, an approved list.
Yeah.
Three or four, that company comes in, they screw something up. Now, whose responsibility is it that they screwed it up? They were on our approved list, we told them you had to choose from one of these companies.
They only have to choose if they want the three thousand, if they don't want the three thousand, they can get X Y Z or Tom and Joe or whoever they wanna get. I'm saying if, if we're gonna pay out three thousand of taxpayers' money to somebody, we oughta be saying, who's gonna make sure it's a professional job as opposed to just anybody doing it, you know what I'm saying? That's my, my thought, if we're gonna do it, I don't wanna do it at all, you know that, I, I mean, I would be against it, but if we are gonna do it and it gets approved, then I wanna make sure there's some checks and balances in there. The other thing is it says a homeowner will get it, so there's nothing here that says you must submit a bill or anything to anybody. It just says up to three hundred costs, I mean, you know, so I think you need something in there to prove.
The mayor's, the mayor's approval.
Well, no, but how, what does he have to have to prove it, there's nothing here that says that.
What, what Tim's saying, I, I think what Tim's saying is, is that it doesn't say that, it doesn't say that, it doesn't say that we're paying the company directly for a billable amount, it's saying we're paying the money directly to the homeowner.
Right.
Yeah.
We pay the homeowner three thousand, cause they should have billed, and they never pay the, the company.
Can I ask you, Tim?
You know.
You say you're, you're dead set against it, can you explain to me why?
Because I don't think we're legally liable for any of these clogs. I mean, I don't think we're legally liable, I mean, and we only have one or so a year, and John says a lot of people don't even claim them, cause they're too embarrassed about it or whatever. So my thought is, don't, don't worry until they come and sue the company, I mean, sue us, you know, and then we let the insurance company handle it.
You need to, you need to come to a couple of these, so.
I think if you came to one or two, you probably wouldn't think that.
I would have a problem.
And you see the people standing there.
Call me, next time there is one, call me and I'll go out here.
First of all, this is just a little bit, I think, of what you're gonna just help these people out at, and it's for public health and safety and to speed things along, and you're showing that you have, just like we have a lawsuit getting ready to come up now. Well, I don't think their attorney even knew that we paid for cleanup, I haven't heard anything from that attorney since, since our attorney told them that we paid for the cleanup. Um, it's gonna be interesting to see how that lawsuit goes, because we have done more and went beyond what I think they're thinking what's happened there. They're asking for twenty-five thousand dollars and we paid so much to clean up beyond what we paid now, but I think if we, what we've shown is, is that we've shown that we, we will help them out in this type of situation, but I think it's gonna help a lot when the court system starts, when this thing starts winding down, that's, that's my opinion, I mean, I.
Well, yeah, here's my one.
Well, as a citizen and a, a person that has actually dealt with a crushed sewer line and rotor ruder and so forth, if it's mine and it's my line, I'm quite all right with cleaning it up, but if it's my neighbor's, I'll be down here. No problem if, if it's a lateral and we've encountered that and it was a crushed line and Kukosing took care of everything. But, like I said, if it's mine, okay, if it's my neighbors and it's coming from your line, I want some help, and I think this is a good deal. You're not encountering a great number of these, like what you do with your business. See, you know, you're not encountering more than a few a year, so you're not gonna get into the cleanups knowing that this is a habit.
More than likely, I mean, I've been in a few of them where you just, people just get about that much on the floor in their basement, and if it's a finished basement, they're, they're not even gonna be able to live in that house tonight.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they're gonna be going to a hotel somewhere, they have, they have that, oh, it's horrible, I mean, you walk in that front door.
Yeah.
And it about knocks you over, and, uh, you know, I mean, there's a lot of costs, all you're doing is, is you're, you're supplementing, you're helping your citizens out. Now, if you guys don't wanna help the citizens out, I mean, there's a lot of cities that have these cleanup policies, I mean, I've taken from several and kinda combined it into this, but.
If you ever flushed the clog and you see it coming at you instead of going away.
The, the other thing is this goes through, is I think we need to define cleanup, what the actual definition of cleanup is, I think, I mean, because each person could have a different opinion of what cleanup is.
No matter, you're setting the limits of cleanup's cleanup, I mean, if cleanup is tearing the drywall out that high, or it's cleaning the floor, it's, whatever it is, you're setting a limit on the cleanup that you're doing.
No, John, what I'm trying to say is.
Why do I have to get specific into what cleanup is? Go ahead.
Okay, I just like to finish my sentence before you jump in there.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, if it's up to three thousand dollars, okay, and you said some people just get a little spill on their carpet, okay, all right?
I've seen them all, all variety.
Okay, here's the example, you get, you get a backup, they got a finished basement, they got carpet on the basement, pad and carpet, okay? If, they've got three thousand dollars to work with, okay, maybe if they didn't have any money and they come in, they'd suck it up, and someone say, you know, we need to cut out this piece of carpet and patch it back in, okay? And patch it back in, okay, that's the cheap thing, okay? But they got three thousand dollars, you know, we can pull up that whole pad and the whole carpet, take it off, get all the new carpet in there and that's part of the cleanup.
You can't, you can't replace it.
That's not cleanup. How do I know that's not cleanup, John doesn't say what cleanup is here, that's what I'm trying to say, what is the definition of cleanup?
Cleanup is, is.
Is what?
Cleanup is the removal of whatever may have been damaged by the wastewater. Replacement is then replacing that stuff that you've cleaned up.
Are you gonna, are you gonna remove all the carpet, is that part of cleanup cost?
Sure. If that's what's needed, yeah.
See what I'm saying, okay, so you got to define what your cleanup is, I bet everyone in here, if you list everything it covered, might have a different definition of what cleanup is. When you get this, it's just cleanup.
Cleanup is cleanup, you're just not replacing anything, you know?
Okay, okay, so the drywall gets damaged, so it, so the cost of cleanup is to cut the drywall and take it out? Is also to cut the studs or sterilize the studs?
Yes.
That's part of sterilizing the studs?
What, what, I'm sorry, what?
Sterilizing the studs is part of the cleanup?
Sterilizing is part of cleanup.
Up to silver, okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out where, okay, the, how I know where cleanup part is.
Well, then keep in mind, Tim, I'm not in the cleanup of sewage waste business, I don't know anybody else around here that is. Okay, so we're not the experts on that, so, I mean.
Okay, so again, I, you get eight, a guy says there's three thousand, he gets A B C to come in here and they say, the cleanup, we need to cut this way up here, we need to do this, and you sterilize. The whole thing, they're not experts with that, they're getting a whole new, I mean, how do you know that it needed to get it?
There are guidelines, Tim.
Where's the guidelines that put it in here?
But the companies know that and they normally, they normally get people that clean these up, there's, there's only a couple around here that do it. One's Rainbow and one is ASAP and I think there's one other one out at Club.
And as we heard from the folks at ASAP, they're not really wanting to be in the business much anymore either, so.
And.
There's a very limited number of local people.
On the drywall, they'll measure up how high the water came and then there's a set rule for disinfection and stuff that. So much above that, drywall has to be removed for what it soaks, they have it all spelled out, they, they go to classes and everything in order to, to do this. I don't think the mayor is gonna pay anybody unless they know, he knows that it's a reputable company. I mean, you know, that's my opinion, I mean, that's what I would do.
Well, let me ask you this, John, normally, if there's sewage backup, whether or not it's in the main or if it's in the lateral. You're probably one of the first people to get called, alright?
Okay.
It would be possible for you to have contact information for the one or two businesses in, in, in this area.
I always have. Mm-hmm.
That handle that, uh.
I have it on my phone.
Okay, so it is possible for us to give them some, uh.
Guidance.
Yes, as to who we know that will do this job well. And they're, and you're right, they're certified in, in, in hand, I, I'm assuming there's some certification process. I would, I would assume the board of health would, would wanna make sure that companies who are in the process of cleaning up human sewage backups. Are not, you know, the Joe Schmo company or whatever.
And maybe that's something we look at as we put the word certify.
If there is some kind of certification process, we want someone that is.
I tell you, I can go for this if you take the three thousand out of it. I think the lawyer, our attorney, you and John knows the three thousand limit. But I'm like, damn, Tim, I think as many as you put that out there, that's what they're gonna ask for. So I think we should just leave the three thousand out, but you and John and our attorney knows and we've got a three thousand dollar limit. So I don't think you should put it.
I, I think it becomes a lot more clear cut for everybody if they know that there's a dollar limit to this, alright? Cletus, you have a backup in your house, the cleanup cost is four thousand dollars, we say we have a cleanup policy, okay? Your cleanup costs are four thousand dollars, legit costs for cleanup, four thousand dollars. Now, we're gonna come around and tell you that it's, we're only gonna pay you three thousand, there's nothing that, there's nothing in the policy that said that there was a three thousand dollar limit. And, 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 and you're gonna, and you're gonna feel, you know, good about that?
I got an insurance policy, it's gonna cost me five hundred and it's done with it.
I mean, you see what I'm saying? If in the policy it says that this is the max, then if your bill's four thousand dollars, well, guess what, you know you're gonna get three thousand. And, and, and you're gonna, you know, you'll have to fork out the rest or whatever, but, but at least you know right up front, here's the cap that the city's gonna pay. If you don't put that in the policy, but you just expect the utilities director and the mayor to then say that? I mean, it, it.
Here's a fun example.
See, I've dealt with people so long, even through a church, our church out there. And every time we put a limit in, now that's what everyone in Scrappers don't, because you've got some uncooed people that are in this world. And they don't care who you are. Now, you take most people, let my neighbors know, they'd probably say, you know, just pay my. Part of the insurance policy I have to pay for.
Yeah.
But I do know people that would take you to the cleaners and they could.
If he's got an insurance policy and it covers the cleanup, but you had to pay out five hundred dollars. I don't see anything wrong with us reimbursing the dollar, if that's our main that was clogged up, I don't see anything wrong with reimbursing the five hundred bucks for his, part of his insurance.
I, I will tell you guys this, three thousand dollars does not buy much cleanup. Okay, I'm gonna tell you that right now. I mean, you know, so I don't think you're gonna get a lot of these play, I think, uh, most of your cleanups are gonna exceed the three thousand dollars, so.
It's gonna be in council's hands anyway.
My, my personal opinion is, is, yeah, if they, if they really, right, if they really wanna pursue it. I mean, it could be in council's hands or we could just say, this is the policy and Americans say, that's all we pay. You know, I mean, you guys have that option of doing whatever you wanna do. I mean, personally, I would stick with the policy. But three thousand dollars for cleanup is not that big of, big of a deal, I, I've seen a lot of these bills, but. What amounts to three thousand dollars in a home for cleanup for disinfection and everything that takes place in it and what they charge. And then they have evaporators that run constantly and they charge you for that piece of equipment while it's sitting in there and that. I'm, I'm telling you, you're, you're just at the bare minimum cleanup.
When you say the utilities director will determine if the property owner needs to install a backflow preventer to receive the three thousand dollar payout, we've already talked about. You know, we can't hold up and wait to see if that gets done, but could we put a caveat in there that says? If this is not done, there will be no further help from the city if this happens again, or something and have them even sign somewhere that, that they've been, they're on notice so that, you know, I.
They got no problem, right?
Yeah, I just think that that way, you know, you've told them.
This is, the way that I envision that playing out is, you've had your first backup.
Right.
Uh, the city will help pay for that.
Right.
If, you know, based on utilities director, find out the circumstances of what's going on. I can see a letter going to that homeowner then saying, uh, you need to install a backflow. Uh, because we're not gonna do this again.
Right, that's what I'm saying, put them on notice that this is John's recommendation that you have this done. And so now that we put you on notice, we're not gonna pay again if, if you don't do it.
Believe me, the utilities director's gonna know if this has happened before because the people that work under him is gonna let him know. I mean, they're gonna know right away whether this is a reoccurring problem, this is a once in every thirty year problem, that, you know, you know, I hate to just. I guess the reason why I put that in there, I hate to just automatically, every time someone gets a, some kind of a sewer backup and they want.
Right, right, right.
They want some kind of compensation, whether it's five or six hundred dollars, make them install a backflow.
Right, no, I'm not saying that, I'm saying you make the call whether they need it, but if you've said they need it, then we put them on notice that you've, you've instructed.
See, they know what lines maybe tend to cause more of a problem. And so they do probably more cleanup on those lines, uh.
Right.
Maintenance on those lines than, than, than some others.
Right.
So, you know, it's a situation where, yeah, if you know it's a line that could be susceptible to this problem.
Right.
And somebody has that problem, then they would probably be a good candidate for a backflow preventer. If this is the first time in twenty years that there's ever been a problem on that particular main.
Right.
Chances are, that was a fluke.
Yeah.
And, 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 and I don't know that you would necessarily want to buy it.
Right, and that's where we rely on his expertise, because that's not my expertise, but if he's told Dwayne, you need a backflow preventer because you've been a problem. And then Dwayne, you know.
It's my problem.
Says, no, I'm not doing it, then the next time Dwayne comes, we say, no.
Yeah, you didn't do that.
Yeah, we put you on notice, so that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so, but isn't that, I mean, isn't that what the, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but.
No, because what C is saying i- is that you would, uh.
Utilities director will determine it.
That, that, that they would need to install the backflow before receiving the money, like, so hey, so it's your first time.
Mm-hmm.
And you say, um, yeah, yeah, you need a backflow. What this, the way this is worded right here, it says before you get the money for that incident that just happened, your first time, you have to install a backflow.
Right, which is not what we're saying.
That's, that's what C there says in number five.
So you wanted to say the second offense?
Second offense.
If determined by utilities director, then it's necessary that there will not be additional dollars paid out if this is not done.
But, but.
Before we move into, Tim, I got a question on that, where is the records kept on? First offense, second offense, how do we have?
Every, every time someone goes down.
If I buy a house in Heath, how do I know?
Every time, I mean, if you come down and ask to see him, you're more than welcome to look at him. But we keep, we keep, every single sewer backup we're on, we keep track of the time that we show up, how long we were there, what equipment was used. Uh, I mean, you know, it's all in, it's all on record, it's, I mean, we have everything.
It's in a file folder or some sort of system.
It's in a file folder.
Something that, that. The new homeowner, do they have, know they have to find out or is it, do the real estate people know to look this up if I'm representing the?
Uh, not yet. It's a matter of public record, if asked, that we would provide.
If someone would ask us, we'd have to provide it.
Good idea. Okay, um, first of all, I wanna say that I think John did a good job on putting this together, I mean, it's a lot of work and stuff. And when you put something good like this and it gives some, someone like me a chance to pick something apart, 'cause I have something to pick apart, otherwise it'd be nothing to pick apart, but, uh. My thing is, talking about backflows, preventers, let's say, we'll pick on Dwayne. Dwayne's had a problem, okay, got a backup, he got the three thousand dollars and he said, needs to put a backflow, he puts a backflow preventer in, okay? But Dwayne doesn't, neglects, it doesn't, you know, get it checked as often as you should and stuff like that, and all of a sudden he gets stuck open, okay? There's another backup, okay? In our main line, it comes through because his backflow doesn't work quite right and he gets a thing, do we pay for it, do we pay for it? Yes, thank.
Because he hasn't done the routine maintenance on the backflow?
Yeah, right.
It's a good question.
Are we saying that once you have a backflow, we'll never pay for a backup because your backflow should work?
We, we'd have to, we'd have, somehow have to.
I don't think there's.
If so, we need to put that in here that says, once you have a backflow.
I don't think there's any guarantee that a backflow preventer's gonna work, I mean, even the people selling them is gonna say, you know, most of the time it should work. Uh, but, you know, there's always, things fail, I mean, that's.
But, but we do know that if a backflow preventer is not maintained and years and years and years go by. The likelihood of that backflow preventer not working when it needs to is gonna be greater than if they had the backflow preventer installed. And did the routine maintenance on it that they should do.
But how do we know if he does routine maintenance, I mean, how are we gonna know? Are we, I mean, he could do routine maintenance all the time and then the, and it still goes bad, or he may never do routine maintenance.
You don't know.
But we come out there, I mean, he goes, well, I've been, every year I check that thing, we would know, you know?
Should we, should we somehow require a?
You know.
Cause we're, and, and again, we are speaking about very few and far between that we would require, uh, somebody to put a backflow preventer in, so this is not.
You've got backflow preventers all over the city now, I mean, there's probably twelve of them that people have installed. You know, and I haven't heard a word that any of those have failed, but, you know, I'm not saying that in the line, it, it may, it may happen, but. I, in fact, I think on Grandview, I think we might've even paid, so before I started, I think we paid for the backflow preventers, put them in. And I don't know if there's any kind of an agreement or, or, you know, I mean, there's nothing.
On maintaining them?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I do know that.
I can probably ask. Um, but no, I think, I, I mean, i- is there a way, to Tim's point, is there a way that, uh?
You're saying if we make them put in a backflow preventer and the backflow preventer fails, then.
Or do we pay the three thousand dollars again?
Do we pay the three thousand dollars if they have another?
And then if I say another couple of years go by and it fails, I mean, you know, we, we, we made him put a backflow preventer in and it says in here. To install back in order to receive the three thousand, he says, I put it in, give me the three, I mean, you know, there's no thing that says once we do that, we're still not gonna keep that.
I think probably, eight, eight percent of the time that backflow preventer's probably gonna work, maybe ninety-nine percent of the time, there may be that one time when something doesn't. I don't know, how do you wanna handle that? I mean, that's why I think, you know, I stated in there, I mean, a lot of it is up to the mayor's discretion. I mean, if, 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 if we've, if we've paid money to this guy once or twice and, and like you said, Tim, we're not bound really to pay anything.
Well, that's.
I mean, that's why it's up to, it's up to the mayor, basically what you're doing is you're giving the mayor the authority to pay up to three thousand dollars per incident. No matter what happens, you're giving him that authority. If you don't wanna give him that authority, then we don't, I don't even think we need to look at the policy, then maybe we shouldn't even be trying to do policy, but. But what it does is it's, it, it helps your customer and your homeowners out if they get into a situation. I think that's, when you, when we leave it up to the mayor, I think he's the one that needs to ans- ask these kind of questions. You know, has this happened before, did we make him put in a backflow preventer and it happened again no matter what, are they maintaining it? I mean, if they're not maintaining, they're not doing what they're supposed to do, he doesn't have to pay it.
But, but how, alright, and I, and I'm, 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 I'm looking at this from the perspective.
Maybe, maybe I'm giving you authority you don't want.
Well, or, 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 you know, whoever's mayor at the time.
Yeah.
Here's, here's, here's what I'm, here's what I'm saying, okay, I'm, I'm kinda putting myself in the shoes of the property owner. Um, you've, you've told me that I need to have a backflow preventer. But if you don't tell me that I'm responsible for maintaining it and that that maintenance schedule needs to be provided. Should you have another problem? Then I'm not probably going to do that, but if as part of either the policy or the process of notifying some. I don't know that it necessarily needs to be in this policy, but at least in the process of when you notify somebody that. You're respons- you need to put in a backflow preventer because we're not gonna pay this again to you.
Great to cover ourselves.
Yeah, if in that notification, you let them know that they're responsible for the maintenance of it. And you need to have a, you need to be able to show us a maintenance record, you know, invoices from when it's been cleaned, okay, or, or maintained, right? If somebody has a maintenance record and it happens again, then I think you'd be much more comfortable as a city. Paying that individual again, they put the backflow in like you asked, they maintained it like you asked, they've proven that they've maintained it. And yet, for some reason, the thing didn't work and it happened again, okay? That I think would address the situation like what Tim's talking about, yeah, you asked me to put it in, but I didn't maintain it. And we know that if you don't maintain it, it's more likely to fail when you need it to work than if you have maintained it, right?
I think, and maybe you, maybe this is what you're kinda saying, then you let me know. If, if, if it comes to the point where we're requiring someone to put in a backflow preventer, where this has reoccurred more than once and this person's a problem. And we know that it's in an area that is prone to more sewer backups. Then maybe we need to have some kind of a release or something, if we do make them put that pre- uh, preventer in. You are responsible for maintenance of this piece of equipment or whatever you wanna put in there in that release. That when, when you require them to put the backflow preventer in, you have certain stipulations and certain things that have to be either taken care of.
I have a question. The blockage is in our line, not theirs, but our line.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, city, city sewer line.
Yeah, why does that continually happen?
Why does it wet?
You're saying it, it, there are lines that, that are more prone to, why does that happen? Is there a problem that we need to address now?
Sure, there, there, there could be that, I mean, maybe the sewer has a break in it somewhere, maybe it needs to be camered. But that stuff, that's normal routine stuff that we do all the time. And if we have a reoccurring problem somewhere, we'll, we'll camera that area, we camera so many, you know, miles of sewer line every year. You know, to see if we have any specific problems and we, we have a couple areas that we're gonna have to do some work on, I mean, to do repairs and so forth. But that's as part of routine maintenance, I mean, that's, I mean, you can keep going on and on and on with this policy. And I mean, it, it could be this thick, it could, yeah, you know, but what you, what you need to do is what I put up there is the basic part of, of that policy is. You know, how it works and, and why, why you collect it now. You know, we can, we could keep making this thing bigger and bigger and bigger and I'm frankly at the point where I'm about done with it. you know, we can, we could keep making this thing bigger and bigger and bigger, and I'm frankly at the point where I'm about done with it. So, I mean, I don't mind making a few minor adjustments with, for it, with it right now, but if someone else wants to come up with a policy or someone else wants to do something, they're more than welcome. But I don't mind making a couple adjustments here and there in it. But as far as I'm concerned, I mean, I'll push this so far and then I'll stop, because I don't wanna make this, uh, topic of the Public Service Committee every single one. You know, so you guys tell me, where do you wanna go on this? I mean, it's not that hard to figure out.
So the concerns, the concerns we're hearing are more on areas that are continuing, not, not a one-time shot.
Yeah, you're gonna reimburse someone for a one-time shot. If, if someone down the road here at your house on Marine Avenue flushes a, a diaper down the toilet and it come, and, and it plugs the main line, and all that sewage comes in, stops at that diaper and go backs up into your house from all the residents in that area, would you like any kinda help on that or anything? Would you, I mean, your house has got sewage in it, but it's never happened before. Would you like that they have the ability to come in and get help cleaning that up?
Well, I tell you what, if it's in your line, I don't want help. I mean, my line is, I paid the money to put a new line in from my house out to your line. And I expect you as a city to have the thing clean and working.
Yep.
Yeah.
And this is another thing I'm gonna throw in there.
In conversation.
This is, this is not a closed system, and I've read I don't know how many articles on it. It's not a closed system. So there's no way you can regulate everything that people flush down the toilet. You can't. I mean, the volleyball that I showed in one of the things, I mean, someone trying to light a shirt inside one of the, uh, van holes and letting it hang there and see if it would explode or some, I mean, this is what, what, what you run into. Anybody can flush anything they want down the toilet, or, uh, you know, I guess one of the biggest problems is that you guys remember when they had those toilet cleaners and you disconnected the end of it, and then they would flush down the toilet and they found out that that doesn't even break down? They find, you don't hear about it anymore, you don't see it advertised anymore, but that was coming in and clogging screens and, and sewers up. You can't always maintain things like that. You can't, I mean, we can do our best to try to keep them clean, but we're not gonna be able to keep everything clean. So that's why this is offered, this, this little bit of money, believe me, that happens maybe once a year, whatever, it helps somebody out if they get in this type of situation. But if we keep going through it over and over and over, trying to find every single small detail that doesn't, I mean, you're never gonna get a policy of any kind. Basically, it works like this. You have a sewer plug, you go to the mayor, if he releases three thousand dollars to help you out, he will release it that way.
Because we have blockages in our line.
Because you have approved it, right.
City has, the city has a blockage in the city line, yeah.
And there, right. We won't do it if it's in their line.
It's in their lateral, uh, tough.
Well, that's their responsibility.
Right. But I mean, it's a, we could make this thing to death and it, we could make it so complicated,
Right, right.
but I tried to make it simple so that the mayor has the ability and the right to make payments to people who are in trouble with, with sewage backups. But we gotta be careful what we do. I mean, we can't, you know, make this thing so monstrosity that I think.
Keep it simple.
Yeah, I guess.
But what, what I was gonna refer to is if, if on the, a backflow that you're installing, then he oughta put something together to have them sign off on, but only on that occasion. You don't need it in the whole deal. But when they, when they get one installed, you'd tell them and make, maybe even make them sign off a statement that they have maintenance.
They're responsible. I mean, that's theirs. That we're making them pay for it, and they gotta maintain it. We're not paying for it, we're just making them aware.
And, and they don't have to do that.
No.
But we're not gonna help them with another backup, sure they have.
Right, and that, that's up to your discretion.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
If they come in and say, well, Mayor, you made me put a backflow preventer in, okay, you paid for it, right? Did you maintain it? Well, I don't know if I did or not. Well, do you have any records of main, any maintenance you've done on it? Well, no, I really don't. Well, I'm sorry.
That would maintain something like that, John?
I got not gonna pay. Huh?
How would you maintain something like that, backflow?
There's different ones out there. Some of them you can maintain, some of them you can't. I mean, they're, they're designed and they're changing them all the time, but the ones I've seen here lately have a lid inside, you know, you can pop out, it goes down. You know, there's like a, and there's a little clean out in there that you can clean things out. But it's just basically a check valve, that's all it is. And it's, they'd flush something down there that would hold that flush, but, you know, that, that open, and they'd, uh, uh, get a sewer backup at that time. Then some of them have alarms on it. You can buy them, uh, where they have an alarm on it, and if water backs up so far and there's a probe hanging in there, then it alarms inside the house. I mean, you, there's all different kinds you can get. I mean, there.
Very neat.
You know, yeah.
How much you wanna spend?
Anyway.
My, my feeling is, is that it's important for us to have a policy in place for two reasons. Number one, it makes it clear for everybody, here's what we will or won't do in these situations. And number two, it, it gives, you know, yeah, with Mayor's authority, but, but the utilities director is the guy that's gonna have the call. The utilities director is gonna be the person probably interfacing with that homeowner at a very, very stressful time in their life. Uh, and, and, and it gives the, the, i- i- it gives the city the ability to leave that homeowner feeling better with the fact that the sewer system that they pay for each month to operate, but didn't operate for them on this occurrence, that they're getting some relief for the ci- from the city for that.
Is it?
I mean, if, 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 if we don't put this policy in place,
You have no regard.
then I'll make sure that the utilities director gives everybody your own phone numbers when he gets called out, and I can manage with you.
I look at it, if, you know, like, I, I feel that, you know, like Cletus says, he's, you know, concerned about the monetary thing in there. There's nothing wrong with us stating that the utilities director and mayor shall determine. And we know that it's three thousand, but.
That's, I think, Tim's idea as far as, I think, Tim's idea of, of maybe having, and, and we know there's not very many companies around anyway that do this.
That's right.
But I think Tim's idea of having, you know, we can give that information to them when they come.
And I do. When I show up on site, I mean, they have no idea, most of the time people have no idea who to call.
Yeah.
I mean, they're like, you know, who, what do I do? You know, and, and I, I, I know that we've dealt with ASAP in the past, I know with, uh, Rainbows and other company that cleans them up. I know that there's another company.
What's that national company?
There's a company out of Columbus.
Advertises where they come in and do the fire.
Serenity, Serenity or Shran.
Is the first response to any of that kinda stuff, or they just do fire service?
Serprow, Serprow.
Serprow.
That's the national one.
That's the name.
And they are the biggest.
I'll tell you what, they did my daughter's house, yeah, that fire.
But, you know, I can walk in and I can say, you know, I can, you know, I know that there's a policy that'll pay up to three thousand dollars for cleanup. You know, you can apply for this, talk to the mayor, or I can walk in and say.
And let's get somebody in here and get, and start this cleaned up, because it's a health house.
Right, right. Or I can walk in and say, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to sue our insurance company, or you're gonna have to do this, and walk away. You know, I mean, that, that's the difference. But I, I can, I can make a few of these changes that you guys suggested, and. Tim? Let me know.
You're the one to present.
You and Ray Boy.
Oh, Jeff Craywell, yeah, that's right.
I'll, I'll make some of these fine tunings if you, if you see something else that you want. I mean, as Dad mentioned, and Mayor, is there anything else? I mean.
Give us a chance.
If you're, if you're gonna tweak it, John, in that number two where it says the mayor would receive council authority, hand a cost of three thousand, and then a catastrophic, you could strike both those two sentences out of that, because essentially by approving this, we're approving the three thou- where it says other places.
Yeah.
You don't really need that in there, because it's already, by doing this, we, we're going that other.
Right, right.
And I don't think you even wanna tell people if it's more than three thousand, what has to happen. You just, if it is more than three, let them have.
Then we deal with it.
Yeah, you know, let them have.
So you're saying what now?
You're sending it back to council, so don't put the item in there.
On the third page of item number two.
You don't really need.
Where it says the, the mayor would, the mayor would receive council authority.
The mayor would receive council authority.
Because by, uh, we approve this, we are giving him the authority of it already.
And that three thousand dollar thing out of it.
And then, and then the catastrophic. Don't even need that in there either.
From here.
You take those two sentences out, 'cause by essentially by us doing it, that's what you're creating.
Right.
By approving the policy, they're approving the three thousand. If it's more than three thousand, then council's gotta handle it anyway. You don't have to.
We don't, I don't want people to know that, 'cause you put that in there automatically, and people read it, they're going, whoa, here we go.
Right. Yeah, right, right.
They're gonna be calling.
But you want it in the first one.
Want it in the first.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Everywhere you have an other net is okay, 'cause you're just, you're, you know.
Okay.
The o- the other question I have, this may be a, just a thing on my own, but we have that pro- on number one where it says pay to a property owner up to three thousand dollars.
You wanna pay directly to the?
Well, I don't know if it needs to be paid directly to that, but I wonder about, like, you could have a person living in a house, they don't really own the house, their mom, dad, uncle, someone in California actually owns the house or whatever, but they live in it, you know what I mean? It's the property's in their name, or in somebody else's name somewhere. And if you're saying that to property owner, then essentially they may be paying all the bills there and stuff, but you would, by that, it almost say, oh, we gotta send the check to your.
The landlord.
Land, you know, wherever, somewhere, and this person actually paid for everything, you know?
What, uh?
So I don't know how, I don't know how you do that, you know?
I don't know for sure that's. So do you wanna deal directly with the company then?
No, no, let, let me, let me, let me just throw a red flag up on that. If, if we, if we are paying the company directly, then it's the city that's contracting with that company to do that work.
Yeah, I don't wanna do that.
I don't wanna do that.
You don't want the city, and I don't want the city to contract with the company either. But what I'm saying is, is that if the city pays the company directly, then isn't that what we've done?
Yep. Yeah, but I'm, I'm sa- I'm not saying that. I'm just saying where it says pay the, you're saying pay the property owner, I'm curious if we need to pay the person to pay the bill.
Pay the.
Pay the.
In other, here.
How do you, how would you phrase that?
How would you read it?
I, 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 I don't know. I don't know, I don't, I don't know how you word, that's, that's where I am bringing it up.
The tenant?
I just know that.
The resident.
The resident, the resident?
The resident.
The resident, there you go, the resident.
The resident, we say the resident.
Well, then it get me on owner slash resident, or I don't.
I don't know about that.
Right.
Hang on, I'm not sure that as a city, we pay the resident. And he moving out in two days.
Yeah.
Cause the landlord, maybe the one paying.
You say you convinced the bill.
Okay, so, it's, it's like this thing, it, it, let me draw a, a comparison. When we do EMS billing, okay, uh, in most cases, their EMS bill doesn't get processed until after their, um, hospital bill has been processed. So in a lot of cases, that person's insurance company will pay their client directly for reimbursement of the EMS bill. Now, we know that this takes place. We know that the client has, the, 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 the patient, the, the insurance company's client, has received this money from the insurance company. They are instructed by med bill to turn that money right back over to pay the bill. Sometimes it doesn't happen. We then go after the individual, because we know that they've been reimbursed already by the insurance company, but they didn't pay us. So that's, we can pay to the resident the cost of the cleanup. If that resident does not pay company, whatever, for doing that cleanup, the city's out of it. It's between the company and the resident.
Right, right.
We've done our part. It's the resident's responsibility to do what they should do, which is to pay the company that did the cleanup.
And the company.
And if the company doesn't get their money, the company will go after the resident, and we're out of it. You see what I'm saying?
So we do put, pay the resident?
I still think the homeowner oughta get it, but that's just my own personal opinion.
Are we gonna ask them to submit a bill before we pay?
They're gonna buy him the place.
Oh, yeah, because we're only paying up two.
So then we would know whoever paid it, if they're, whoever's being billed for it, I guess, because if I own a property.
Yes. See, and we don't want the city to get billed. We want the resident to get billed.
Right, right.
And you know, and you know the resident's gonna say, hey, I don't want the Dan bill, you send it to the guy that owns this place.
Yeah, because that's what we're, yeah.
So, like, you know, a landlord's gonna get the bill, not the guy that's living in the house. So we could say resident, but it's gonna, the resident's gonna say, uh-uh, don't send that bill to me, send it to Joe Blow, he owns it.
Yeah, if you're renting, if you're renting a house, I'm assuming as a renter, you're calling your landlord saying.
He owns his dog.
It's not okay then. Yeah, I would.
Yeah, most everybody.
How about we pay the effective resident?
That's why, I think, you know, some of this stuff has been taken right out of, this was like, that portion was out of the city of Sydney, and I know that their attorneys have looked, looked at this thing, and, you know, I, I mean, I don't know, you.
I don't think.
I'll put whatever you guys wanna put.
I just said, I just, the way it was underlined there, property owner, it, it, I, I just brought to my attention the fact that it says property owner, because you could have someone that owns a property, but they're selling the property, someone on a land contract, or someone like that. It can be a, a mom and dad selling it to their kids or whatever, the kids have lived there for, for fifteen years. They pay all the bills, do all the stuff, but if you actually look at, on, go to the county records, find out who actually owns the property, it's mom and dad in California or someplace like that. And what I'm saying is, if you say property owner, then you get the bill and you say, well, it's, find it in, you paid three thousand dollars to X Y Z company to do it, but I gotta send this payment to the property owner, and they live in California. I'm sending them the check. They're gonna get the check, and it'll be like, now they gotta send it back. They could do that, that's fine, it is, I'm just saying that.
My brain isn't, my brain can't work enough to figure out how to phrase this right now. If I, if I, if I sit on this for a little bit. But, 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 but what we wanna do is, all right, we have, we're, we're first of all, selecting the companies that, that, that we're gonna.
Recommend.
Mm-hmm, that we're gonna have do this work. If, if we're gonna pay the three thousand, here's among who you select. So we already have.
If the resident says, who do I call? And they're asking me, you know, who do I call to clean this up? I can give them certain.
I, I, I would take it one step further, which is to say to the resident, before they ask the question, we have this policy in place, but you have to use one of these three or four, or however many companies that are on this list, okay? So we already know who's on the list. We will, will have some rapport, some relationship or whatever with these companies.
Yeah.
So these companies will let us know who they are billing. Who we need to reimburse is who they are billing, and it isn't us.
Right.
But whoever, if it's the resident, if it's the landlord, if it's Aunt Molly from Alaska, whoever they're billing
California.
is who we need to reimburse. And then it's the person being billed responsibility to make sure that that, that they then are paying that bill. And it, and if not, then it's between the company and the person who they've charged, but we're not.
Right. So how are you gonna put this, for the purpose of this?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I need to think about how to, how to phrase it, but, but that's what we're talking about.
It's term no fault means the city will pay to.
Is, is that basically what you're saying, Tim? That's.
Reimbance bill payer.
Yeah, I just, you know, it's just.
We gotta, I gotta think of a way to phrase that, but, but that's what we're trying to.
It's the fact here is property owner, and I've been saying that, you know.
What if you just.
If they're paying.
Will pay.
And they're getting three thousand dollars.
Up to three thousand dollars. Take that property owner's statement out of there. We will pay up to three thousand dollars. It's not, we're not stating, we're saying we're gonna pay a bill. You know, take the word.
I just wonder if there's a reason why the property owner is underlining.
Going to hell, ever, out of there, and say, we will pay up to three thousand dollars.
Cause there must be something.
Now, the company who's doing the work's gonna determine who in the act we bill or give the money to. So you taking it out of there, if the, if, if I'm Johnny living in Aunt Molly's house, and that happens, and then I don't want that company billing me. They're gonna say, hey, you send the bill to Aunt Molly in Alaska.
Let me ask you this, if, if a property owner is ultimately responsible for the house, no matter what, shouldn't it always go to the owner of the property?
Yes.
And that, I mean, becau- whether you're a renter or whatever else you are, it's the person who owns the house that's, it's theirs.
When people move out and don't pay their water bill, who do you bill?
The owner.
The property owner.
Property owner.
Property owner dies.
There's, there's a, there's a reason for that property owner.
Look on Radian, the guy died and we can't do, sell their property, 'cause what if, what if you have a house like that, you know, some, some.
Someone's gonna bet somebody own it, whether the property owner dies or what, someone's gonna.
So we, we just write it, that goes to their estate?
We're trying to put committee one in, so.
Yeah.
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 Three reasons. I, I think you oughta just leave it to property owner.
You're right, there's a reason.
The committee's that property owner.
Just take the underline out.
You make the death phrase from the city of cities.
Oh, yeah.
It makes it more important to underline it.
And that's, yeah, I think Tim's right.
You gotta remember, that's what Dave Harrison.
I don't think you need to underline it. Words are what words are. Underlying doesn't mean anything more or less.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't think we need to underline it.
You know what? It looks like it was a fill-in-the-blank, type, type in, you know?
Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's.
Now, I will tell you that Dave's looked, he's looked at all this. I forwarded it to the mayor, what his comments were. He had nothing bad to say about it or anything.
I read over the whole thing.
He had nothing bad to say about it or anything, so I mean.
See, just like there's an all.
I feel that we need to do something to where, when you go out. Be a part of this, that you know that we've got your back, you know, it's just not like we're sending you out there and you say, oh, well, to hell with it. You know, you get it cleaned up and turn it into our insurance company, they're gonna fight you and you're gonna lose, so see you later, you know? And that, I don't think we should put anybody, I don't care, John, ten years from now, or fifteen or whatever. Whoever's setting your position, we're, we're still got his back too, you know, and I just feel that.
You know, this policy is not just for what's happening now, but hopefully it's for what goes on in the future, or, and whatever, and they can follow it, but.
And you're also saying that maybe we don't even have one happen any year, you know, some years we might have two.
Does this still have to go through council lines? You know, I don't know, but Dave really addressed that, would it be by resolution, supporting the policy?
Well, I think, I think when it gets into the money situation of it, because you're, you know, legislation wise, that's why we put a limit on it. And set a limit at three thousand dollars, so that the mayor had some leadway of what he could do, if it exceeds that, then.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, is if they'd have never told us how city council expresses their approval of this policy. That's a good question.
He, he. The other policies is you sign it, and it's over.
Law.
It's law, that's it, it's a policy.
It's a policy.
That's why on there I put a signature spot for you, I mean, you sign that thing and it.
Thousand gonna come out in your line item this thing.
Most, most policies don't come, don't.
Where it's came out before is, 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 it's just in the, it, you know, when we paid it before, it just came out of the regular budget. Uh, other services, services that we offer that we paid for.
Sure, so it's random.
Called three, three nine, other services. But what you're doing is, it, is you're kinda, I'm not so sure that you even have to have council's approval with it, that money's in the budget.
Yeah, but most policies do not involve direct monetary, uh, consequences, right?
Most of them's policies.
This is not a policy like, you know, you're allowed to wear shorts between the month of, between the state and that date, if, you know, if you're in the. Stiffier city work, you know what I'm saying, th- th- this is a little bit the different animal, why don't you let me, you sure?
Yeah.
Is, what is it, uh, is it Memorial Day, Labor Day, or is that right?
Actually, it's March to September, I think.
Really? Um, why don't you let me ask David that question?
Hey, and the thing of it is, I look at this way.
The airboxes, so we have a, and we'll have to.
I'll make a few of these adjustments, I'll run it by the mayor again, uh, then the final one will go in your guys' boxes, and. I don't need any discussion for a minute at that point on.
The only time they would've come to us is if it goes over the three thousand dollar limit.
Well, we're only paying up three thousand, if someone has a, a catastrophe, and, and they would come to the mayor, the mayor would have the right to run that through. Kinda like we did on the other one.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, let's ask David, I mean, maybe just some sort of voice vote, or, I'll, I'll ask that question. Your last chance.
Last, my last thing on this whole thing, is, I just wonder if we should wait to actually do this policy. Until after the lawsuit is over with on the other thing, ask, ask Dave if it has any bearing on that.
I think that's a, that's.
Okay. You know what I'm saying, ask him about that, whether it should be coming forth until we find out how that all goes.
Okay.
That may have some bearing on.
The court case, so.
What we're doing, yeah.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I just, I didn't want us to also have a pause, then, then they take that pause and they can say, well, here's this, you know, kind of thing, you know what I'm saying, whether.
Yeah.
Before after the fact, I don't know, just ask him if, if, if it makes any, it may not make any difference.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, I don't want us to, to enact something or do something that could either hurt us or help us hurt us whichever way you look at it, in, in the court case.
Okay, oh, and also, I mean, John, just for clarification, one very, uh, plausible reason why you haven't heard anything yet. Is because there are time, uh, lines on things, and, you know, it, it, it just may not have progressed to that point in timeline yet. I mean, when, when, when a suit is filed, I think the, I think the person having filed against them has thirty days to reply to the court, so it's.
What I'm saying is, is the city has shown some compassion, and it's paid a certain amount, and don't, don't you think that that isn't gonna have something to do? With the verdict to be it, that's what, I mean, I think it.
When you said, and, and I haven't heard anything, so, well, you may very well not have, because it just, you know, the deadline for this, that, or the other, just.
It could be ninety days.
Well, I did just recently sign some information that I would not destroy any records or anything like that, and turned that, had to turn that into their attorney. So.
I don't know, well.
He could say, hey, you missed the deadline, say I'm backing out of this.
Okay, I'm gonna go into requests for legislations, we have a couple of them here, and, uh, the first one is.
Did you skip number three?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, this kinda ties in. But, um, well, actually it ties in to number four, but I think we wanna get moving, this thing's gonna last a while. Uh, request for legislation, you guys realize that we, uh, bid Franklin Avenue. Uh, water line and pump station out, um, it, this is the kinda stuff I have to deal with, I wanna tell you what happened, uh, right before then. Uh, about a week before the bid, uh, the engineer calls me up and says that they forgot to include like a hundred and thirty thousand dollar line item. So the actual engineer's estimate was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars more than what he originally thought. Okay, this thing goes to bid. We received one bid. Uh, it was, the engineer estimate was actually about what this bid is, well, actually that what we, we got with the one bid. But there were several companies out there that decided that they weren't gonna bid it because they felt it was too far over the engineer's estimate, so we only received one bid. T L V came in right around the engineer's estimate, so what this, uh, request for legislation is. To appropriate one thousand ninety-five thousand two hundred, I'm sorry, one million ninety-five thousand two hundred ninety dollars and fifty-nine cents. Within the water cap for improvement and allow the mayor of the city of Heath to enter into a contract with T L V Services Incorporated. Four two four O Morris Road, Alexandria, Ohio, as per the specifications on file to construct new water line and pump station on the east side of Heath. T L V is a company that we've dealt with before, they're the company that put in the tank on the west side, so we're familiar with the company.
Did they put the tank in, or did they run the water lines?
They actually ran the water lines and put the tank in, but the gateway was a sub to them, the people that put the tank up.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Okay, so, uh, they were the general contractor on that job. Um, came within the engineer's estimate, uh, it was recommended from Burgess and Nyble to, to accept their bid. It's a legal, uh, binding document, we can hold them to it. So, that's, that's, that legislative request.
Any questions?
You got more?
Yeah, second request for legislations is an ordinance waiving the bidding process, allowing the mayor of Heath to, to enter into a contract. For the construction services with Burgess and Nyble for the Franklin Avenue Water Main Replacement and Booster Station. Money to be taken from two thousand and twelve Water Engineering Service Budget, that is money that was already budgeted. Uh, to allow for the construction services, it's inside the budget, but I know it's over a certain amount of money. And I felt that there probably has to be some kind of legislative request for that, so that's what the second one's for.
What's the amount coming?
What is the amount?
Forty thousand dollars. Now, what that is, is, and I can explain to you, we are going to be doing most, the majority of the onsite inspection with our personnel. But, what they do is during this process, and let me tell you what it involves. Assist the city with awards of construction contract, attend meetings. Uh, uh, B and N Columbus Office with city staff, and will perform the majority of the onsite visit during construction. A total of seven visits is all they're gonna do, we're gonna do the other of the seven visits, including the pre-construction conference. And the four monthly progress meetings are included, furnish the following services during construction, review submittals furnished by the contractor for confirmation. With the contract documents, and maintain a submittal log and file, respond to the contractor's requests for information, R F Is, and maintain the R F I log. Review the order of construction and work progress chart submitted by the contractor, review and recommend approval of monthly and final pay estimates. Pair and recommend approval of change orders, if there's any kind of a change order that's involved. And consult with the city and make recommendations for any non-compliance with the term of the contract, in other words, if someone wants to do something, that they're gonna hold the contractor to. To the contract, review the reports of testing, inspection of materials and equipment as provided by the city. And the cost of all such tests and inspection materials by laboratories, and it shall be repaid by the city, that's if we have any others. Maintain a record of the work progress and quantities as provided by the city staff to be used in the review of construction payment estimates. Recommend minor changes in plans or specifications to suit field conditions, in other words, if something needs to be changed or whatever, engineer approves that. So that we can make the change, prepare record drawings based on the city staff and contractor supplied sketches. For work performed that varies from the contract plans, so if we do change something, they'll change that in the construction drawings, so that we have it on record. That's what that entails.
Just as a part, uh, I had a person that lives on Franklin, ask me, that this is on the. Southernmost part of it.
Okay.
Is the water line gonna be on the east side of Franklin, or will it be on the west?
It's gonna be in the east.
Cross, when it crosses, you're, you're going underneath Hopewell, is what I told him.
Yep.
And then it'll go up the west side, right, or we'll stay on the east.
Old part of Franklin?
Yeah. See, you got the lower part that's a short Franklin Avenue.
That's the newer, the old.
North of, from Newark, to, to Hopewell Drive.
I'm trying to remember on the drawings, and I can't remember.
That line is on the east side, that's what I told him.
I know the majority.
Wanting to do something with the entrance way to his driveway.
Yeah, it's gonna be in the edge of the, it's gonna be in the edge of the road.
On the east side of the road, or on the west side of the road?
I told him it was on the east side because there was a fire hager on the east side over there, and that's where I figured they were gonna, but I don't know.
It all goes on the east side of the road.
All the way up through?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I'll double check that, but I'm pretty sure that's right. It all goes on the east side of the road, but it's in the road, just on the edge.
Well, see, what I was thinking was, when they crossed Hopewell underneath Hopewell, I thought they went to the west side, because that's where all the lines and stakes are going.
On the west side.
On that part, but I, I couldn't see anything on that old part, so, okay.
Let me look at the plans, I got them up there, and I'll, I'll look at it.
Yeah.
I just know that it's in the road.
Now, you're gonna have somebody out there all the time, probably, on the project.
There'll be someone from the city out there.
That's what I mean, okay, alright.
We originally kinda talked to Jobz and Henderson about possibly being onsite for that. And we didn't wanna incur the extra cost of having another engineering firm involved in it, so we decided to do the onsite ourselves. We will meet with B and N, and that's part of this contract here, they will help us with onsite. You know, that will, they'll get us on track and so forth on, on onsite inspection.
How you think of that, that sound good, I mean?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, do they, do they do, they do that probably, you know, to, you know, some of their own people.
Yeah, it's, just depends on what the project is, and then somebody can hire people, it's just, it's just the, the forty thousand dollars is good money for them. Especially if there's not very little changes, if there's a lot of changes, then it's not as good as money, but it's, that's good money if, if they don't have to do very many changes. But you're paying top dollar, I mean, you're probably paying.
It's a million, it's over a million dollar charge, what would the construction services normally be on the percentage of that?
I know, it just, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's, yeah, it's, but they're not there all the time, yeah, you, you know. Just make sure you get good construction drawings at the end, I mean, since we aren't paying for it, cuz they'll try to.
Right.
Not get them for you.
Yeah, we've got several, no doubt, we're gonna.
Yeah, I mean, they'll have a tendency to get their money and then not, not follow through on that.
Uh, do we have the other one?
The other one you put in.
Check the report.
There you go.
Okay, um, we're also, uh, requesting for City of Heath's request for statements of qualification improvements at the water treatment plant. Uh, the City of Heath is soliciting a request for a statement of qualifications. From an experienced consulting engineer firm to assist with the design of improvements at the Heath Water Treatment Plant. Improvements will include the design of a new fifty-two foot clarifier to replace two existing clarifiers. And ha- that have reached the end of their useful life, the conversion of the existing gas chlorination system to liquid. And associated improvements, the city's plan is to complete design in two thousand twelve, with construction beginning in two thousand thirteen or two thousand fourteen. Engineering firms receiving S O Cs or statement of qualifications will be Hazen and Sawyer, Burgess and Nyble. Jones and Henry, and Malcolm Purney. Now, what this is, is gonna be very similar, and if you, you guys should have in front of you, uh, the statement of qualifications. Okay, everybody has it, is it? Uh, basically, Doug, you were kinda involved in this last time, uh, this goes out to the engineering firms. We pick, uh, the top two that we feel, uh, and there's a grading thing on the, on the third page of this, where we grade them, we had, we formed a committee. Last time, we graded the engineering firm, and then, uh, we will pick two firms to come in and talk to us. Now, the best thing about this new thing is that Dave Morrison informed me, uh, last November. Uh, what it did was it gave more leadways for cities to negotiate with engineering firms. And what they do is, uh, we will pick the number one firm, the mayor will be able to go in and negotiate. With that engineering firm on a price. If they can't come to a price, then he discontinues talks with that engineering firm and goes to the next person on the list. Okay, that's the way that Dave Morrison said that they handled it, that, that they're handling these things now. Now.
Still not the best deal, but, because, to me, it seems like what you're charging for the services that you say you're gonna render. Should be a pretty big factor in the decision making of, you know, of, of who you select, but, but they didn't, you can't do that. It's not, price isn't brought up until after the rankings of the firms has been, has taken place.
That's true.
It would be best if price was part of that decision-making process.
But you know, if you're an engineering firm, you're number one on the list, and the mayor's going, we will, we have this much money we're gonna spend. I think that engineering firm's gonna bend over backwards to try, because they know, once you go to the second one, they're out of it.
Yeah, that's true.
They're done, so they're gonna, they're gonna do their best to try to get you to neg- to negotiate a price with you. At that point, because when you go to the second firm.
The first firm.
The first firm's done, you, you, you inform them, yeah, you inform them in writing.
Beginning it might be.
Right, you inform them in writing that you're done negotiating with them, that you are going to the second firm.
Wow.
And then.
Give you some leverage.
I think it's gonna give the mayor more leverage, I, before we just, whatever they said, we took it.
Yeah.
I mean, if they said it was this amount, you were done, I mean, that, that's it, but I think it's, I think it's gonna give you more leverage.
It's better than what it was before, like I said, it's not the best.
Right, it's not the best, be nice if you could bid it, like everything else we do in the city, but.
It's just a longer process.
Kinda like, I don't know, something about engineers and doctors, I don't know, you go in, you have an operation, and then, you can't negotiate what they're gonna charge you on, you're getting your foot.
Yeah.
Or whatever like that, so you just.
You don't really wanna get the cheapest one.
Hey, just think of that guy's laying there on his back, ready to fire his butt up to the moon, and this went to the lowest bidder. And this went to the lowest bidder?
See, a lot of that came out from the federal government. After Second World War, we built a lot of airplanes and tanks and trucks that didn't perform. And we had trucks and airplanes in the air force. That we didn't have, uh, drawings to order parts from. See, and that was the fault of the engineering, so they pulled a lot of us out. And I was just like, here to go to school. About a year or two years of just mathematics, you know. Just, the design helped select these out, just like that, the design and put all that stuff in, you know. So we could support this airplane and this truck for twenty-five years. What it did is, is one engineering firm checking on the other, they don't need too many boats out there.
Yeah, I'm gonna just briefly mention the improvement at this, at the, at the, at the water plant and why the improvements need to be made. First of all, we definitely need to switch from gas. Because the liability with the city, we've got homes across the street, we've got Indian Mill subdivision down the road. We need to get rid of gas chlorination, we need to go to liquid. And whatever we need to do, we need to, we need to switch it. Second thing is the clarifier, nineteen fifty-seven, it's, it's worn out. Metal's getting thin, concrete's showing deterioration. Uh, the gear reduction systems, open gear reduction system where all the grease and oil drips in directly into the water. And, and we need to update things. I just wanted to mention that to you briefly. Um, I wanted to show you a couple, I just showed a couple pictures here and I know the mayor will get kicked out, but we're doing some work on some, uh, uh, stuff at the wastewater plant and basically why I showed, threw this picture in there was, uh, that is, uh, uh, the new tractor that we ordered earlier this year. And it's helped out a hundred percent. We can haul the front end loader, which you can't see on that, hauls a lot of chemicals to the other locations where we need them. So it's a lot safer and then we also have the ability to, to, uh, dig a hole or do repairs on any, anything at, at the wastewater plant. Uh, that is a manhole that we repaired at the airport, uh, you know, they have that closed down now. That manhole's right in the middle of the airport where the planes come in and land. So we took the advantage of fixing that manhole while the airport was closed. So, that's something that I wanted to share. And then I also wanna bring up youth and government real quick. Um, these two ladies right here from McDonald's, if it wasn't for them cooking the hamburgers and donating hamburgers. Uh, and everything for the food and the buns and, and, and everything. I mean, they not only donate the food, but they cook.
Wow.
Okay, and, and I just wanted to get a picture of them in there. And of course, I wanted to get the mayor in action. Keith, Keith Alexander, Deb's in there too.
Yeah, yeah, Deb's beating me by nose.
Deb's ahead by nose going back to the table, uh, to, uh, after that, so.
Deb's going back for seconds.
I don't know if she'll win next year or not, but so far this year she was the winner. And then, and then that's a brief picture of, uh, all the students and, uh, the setup that we had this year. So, other than that, uh, there's Bob Poskett too, oh, wait a minute.
Yeah, there you go.
Empty handed.
Yeah, he's, well.
Nah, he's got four hot dogs on there.
So, and, uh, these are pictures of, uh, the kids coming down the wastewater plant, of course, they all, I don't know if the mayor wants to tell the story about what happened.
Yeah.
Or not, but maybe, uh, maybe not, but they've shown them some things at the wastewater plant there and, and that's a picture.
Did you guys all hear the story about what happened at the press? Okay, um, me, Doug, Tim, we were with the first group, uh, which was the, the, the mayor and the council members, and we were the first group to go through the wastewater plant. So we go all through, Jack Brown took us through. We go all through and we get to the end of the pro- well, almost the end of the process, uh, where the solids are pressed. And then move on the conveyor belt into the building, which is then fills up and then they take away for the farmers. So, uh, Nick's there to kinda showing people how, you know, sh- with this, then that was awesome, what he did, what he had, I mean, that was, that was great.
That was really neat. Wasn't it neat?
And, uh, so Jack puts on this glove and he reaches on the belt and picks up some of the solid, right? And that has been pressed, so he hands it, he holds it out here like this and he's, you know, he's saying, he said, now, you know, when it's dry, like, it's okay, you guys wanna touch it? And they're all. So then he puts the solid back on the belt, takes the belt off and he says something like, he said, now, when this stuff's dry. He said, it's really not bad at all, so he pulls out of his pocket a napkin. And he opens up the napkin and here's this stuff in the napkin. And he says, he says, he said, really, it's not bad at all? And he takes some and puts it in his mouth and these kids about flipped out. He had taken a brownie in front of them and had it in the napkin. It was so- their, their look on their faces was just surprising.
We should, I wish I had to get a picture of that, I mean, some of the girls, their eyes got, their eyes got.
Are you sure?
We, we had talked about it earlier, we should not doing that.
But just games, Bill, or something. Boy, that would've been a neat picture.
Oh, that was unbelievable, that was so funny.
And that, you have to tell, Nick's not here, but you have to tell him that the way he had that set up, a showing.
Set a whole system.
Yeah, the settling of that was really.
And it's, you know, I mean, when you add the polymer and what, how the polymer helps make it settle.
Yeah.
It's amazing, cause when you see that go in there in the one, in the middle portion. And then how it comes out on the other end, it's a somber.
I tell you, first time I walked in that place, it was about a part of eighty-six and now it's like daylight and dark. A lot of change.
Oh, John, that's one of the questions.
Can I ask? You're done, correct?
Yeah.
Well, I have, uh, an issue and I'm, it's a shame, Mr. Morgan.
Hang on, where you going? Is it dealing with this committee?
Yes.
Okay.
It is to do with my sewer, actually. I found out, I'm one of the folks that you guys been talking about. Uh, when the road came through, the sewer used to be on the edge of the road. And I have two lines going into it. I, I got two properties, I, so, so I got two lines going out there. Well, the one they crushed and they took it and now it's hooked up. Cleared down in Sunbelt Reynolds driveway, okay? So I've got one that's now in the center lane of seventy-nine that used to be to burn.
Yeah, cause we bought the two lanes.
But they bought my property. And put one lane on what used to be my property. So, my lines are now under your property, but you bought them. So what's the, what's the?
That's what I was discussing the other day when we talked about, you know, what happens in the middle of the road when your lateral crushes?
Uh-huh.
Who's gonna pay, who's gonna pay for that?
Uh-huh.
Right now, it's you.
Uh, that's what I was afraid of. Um, cause we're talking about clear out in the center lane of Route seventy-nine where my lateral goes.
That's exactly, that's why I had Doug Brookhart come in that day.
No, the only benefit.
And we talked about, you know, like, ex- exceptional, you know, where we, if we want to include this in the policy and I think the majority of the people didn't wanna include that in the policy. But anyway, go ahead.
Well, I, they did, Kokosin did put new lines.
Oh, yeah.
But you bought my property and my understanding with, uh, property rights is you bought what's underneath. Which is my lateral.
That's under, above, through, yeah.
Now, is that not legally right?
That's normally.
Legally, I think maybe, I don't know, that'd be something Dave's.
But the Kokosin gave you brand new lines. Where they did do that, but now the other one runs all the way down, uh, to Sunbelt Reynolds. Which isn't even my property or my right of way or nothing.
I don't understand, how did they, how did they run a lateral from his property through somebody else's property?
Well, it's in the right of way.
We.
It's in the right.
And it actually goes under your water line. Uh, there's several, the gas line's there, the water line's there, uh, and it went underneath all this stuff. And that's how the guy died, got crushed on the water line, was hooking up my sewer. Um, but it's in that right of way and it's deep. I'm talking.
It's really deep, real deep.
It's well under.
Your lateral's deep?
Well, it's well, well underneath your water line.
Yeah.
Your twelve inch water line, it runs under it this way.
It's deeper than six foot. What, at least eight, six, eight? The water line's around five. Five.
Four and a half, five?
So if it's lower than that, yeah.
Yeah, five, I took it to be five and my sewer's probably at seven to nine. Oh, it's well under your water line. Um, because you had to come a couple hundred feet to get there. As.
Your lateral, your lateral.
It was kind of a special situation, cause it was the construction that crushed our sewer and backed the water up into our house. So luckily, it wasn't the house we were living in, thank goodness, cause we had to run to the other house to use the bathroom for three weeks, okay? Three weeks, we cannot flush our toilet and cannot run water in that house because of what happened. Because the guy died, we had to stop everything, they couldn't. But what happened was when they crushed us, they wanted to bore, uh, they were gonna have to bore under seventy-nine and they didn't wanna do that, so that's why they changed it.
So they ran down the, down the, he's been hooked right into the, probably the, uh.
To hook it up. Yeah. It's right by their driveway.
It goes to the lift station.
It probably goes right to the lift station.
Yeah, exactly.
And see, my other line goes opposite direction.
So we're like.
And I would assume that you're not the only property owner with that situation.
No, everyone along there's gonna be the same way.
Right, right. That's kinda the discussion we had when we had our discussion was that.
That's what John's saying.
Right. We wouldn't want you hiring just whoever to go out and start digging up Route seventy-nine. Oh, yeah. Exactly, and that's what we're thinking too, you wouldn't want us doing that either. You know, that's kinda what we're looking for us, because. Yeah, you, you out there with a jackhammer in the middle of the road.
Wow.
I know he can use one, but I don't think you want him doing that.
Well, I had my, my excitement with the road construction and me cutting the gas line, so, yeah.
That's another one of those case by case scenarios, you know, if something happens, you know, you're gonna probably go to, come to the city and say, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, you purchased this and it's under here and, well, you know, is there anything you can do for me? And, uh, you know, we addressed that the other day, I mean, when, when I had Doug Brookhart come in, he talked about, he said someday, he goes, you're gonna have a problem. Somebody's gonna have a problem where their lateral's gonna run under the city street or it's gonna break down in the middle of the street and you're gonna have to pay your, pay to fix it. And, you know, I mean, that's the way, and if you go to John's or off or you come to me, the way everything's stated right now is you're responsible from your house to the main.
I'm doing public, I'm doing my laterals in your public right of way? I mean, what kind of insurance would, uh, I mean, extend that?
Right now, insurance company gonna cover something like that.
It, it was just a scenario to bring up, I mean, it, it happened to us, so, I mean, we, we paid, wrote a router to come in and find out, it was crushed at a hundred feet off the door.
Yeah, well, I realize, yeah.
See, that was something we could have included in this policy, I mean, you know.
It's just some thinking, you know.
Doug originally and then we discussed it a little bit and some of you said, well, you know, I don't wanna get involved in that much money and, and this and that and, and maybe we should, you know, I, I don't know, but, go ahead, Tim.
I'll put my Newark hat on. Newark, you're responsible all the way to the main, we have people all the time have to get out into, you name any of the major streets, highways, whatever, have to do it. And sometimes it's too expensive to do it, so they find a different way to run their lateral, maybe go to a different direction or something like that. Or, you know, there's, I mean, all kinds of different stuff, but we got people that's got laterals twenty some feet deep and stuff like that. And everything, some of these new housing developments and stuff like that to get through the, the hill and stuff like that and everything. There's some, uh, for them to tie on the lateral, they have to dig, you know, bring a big track hoe in and dig and lay the banks back and all that yard. That's part of homeownership, they want this or they, they don't, you know, I mean, it's just, that's the way it is.
You know, I hate to extend this meeting much further, longer than what it is right now, but I do wanna tell you a scen- a quick scenario and it involves Newark, you. Morgan Avenue.
Yeah.
Uh, our, our line runs three fourths of the way up and stops. Well, there's about one, two, three, four houses that ran their individual laterals in the street to the manhole.
Morgan Avenue, the north side is in Newark, the south side is in Heath. Our sewer main is actually on the north side of the street, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so the Newark residents are hooked up to our sewer.
So, they, these four on the end where our sewer stopped ran these laterals, one's directly, one's there, one's there, one comes down there, but they, these four laterals are going into this manhole. And they're in the street. Now we have another person way up on the end of the street that wants to do the exact same thing. Well, the, so he's gonna come clear down, but first he wanted to tie into someone else's lateral, was that, cause then who's gonna be responsible for cleaning it? You know, so, do, what do we do? Now, he's want, he's talking a pump. Uh, that has a two inch line that he could run down to Eastman to the manhole. Now, we could let him do that, or we can extend the sewer line up the way it probably should've been from the very beginning up to the end of the street. And let everybody tap the lateral like they normally would. And there's a possibility for, well, one house and then there's two or three, there's three other lots up there that could be developed in the future. So, and I got a price of sixteen thousand dollars to extend the sewer up the road. So, is it worth it for sixteen thousand dollars to extend the sewer up to pick up possibly three customers in the future? I mean, I'm gonna have to sit down and.
John, John, the existing customers that are already tied into the manhole. Why would they want to reconnect to the, to where the new line's gonna be?
The only thi- the only reason that I would wanna reconnect is to make it right, cause person.
Well, I don't care about that, as long as I don't have my sewage coming back at me, that's all I'm concerned about.
Now, let me tell you one, one thing else, when we pop the manhole, we can only find three laterals in there and there's four homes. So someone's tapped on to someone's lateral.
Oh, my.
Okay, so, and I don't know how they let that go through or what, what happened. So, you know, I specifically went in there, so you got two people tapped on to the same lateral somewhere and I think I know which one it is. Cause the guy said he came across the street, this is Han Builders, came across the street, went down forty-five into another main. And it couldn't be a main, not the main that other person's ladder.
Yeah, yeah, John, the way, like in Newark, we have spider webs like that all the time and then eventually you wanna straighten out, sometimes what we do is the last guy that, you know, you wanna get it to his property is what it costs, would cost him to run like his line to there. And then offset that cost to say, well, you're gonna put, wanna put an eight inch main and he's gotta dig deep or, you know, now if he's on a pump, he's gonna do as deep, okay? But you can take like his cost, let's say it's gonna cost him, I'll just say five thousand, and it's gonna cost you sixteen, you might pay the other eleven. You know, he's gonna pay five anyway to get it done right, you say, well, wait a minute, we'll pay to upgrade, you know, the sides of that and do this. And then hook them other people in, okay?
Right.
Now, the advantage is, if you got a long lateral going down the street into a manhole, you're responsible all the way to that main, okay? So, here's what could happen, if you call hoops and stuff like that to have stuff located, those laterals will never get located. So they can get dug through and collapse all like that and you're responsible to maintain. Now, if someone hits it, they may fix it, they may not, then later on you have problems and stuff. So, you know, you get way of having all that long lateral that you gotta maintain all the time, now your lateral just comes right out in the street. And again, the city's then responsible from manhole to manhole to make sure that's clear, so you don't have to maintain it, so. In some cases, it's.
I guess I'm thinking, if it was me, I wouldn't pay.
No, I would pay.
Until something happened to my existing lateral line.
Right.
Then, yeah, okay, I would, but until that day comes, I'm not just gonna go run a new lateral, tap onto a new piece of line just cause you put it in front of the house.
You don't have to run a new lateral, I think what John was saying is you go by, you put a Y in for that guy to hook it and then you hook it in as you go by. You take them out of that manhole and then hook them in.
Okay.
Actually do it, that's part of the cost.
You would tie them in.
You know, they come out of this house and he goes down the street, when he goes down the street, turns, just straight, straight in.
That's really a.
And then you have, then you know.
But then it's right.
Then you can camera, you know, okay, this house has that lateral.
And then you have two or three other people that move in there, there's, there's about three other lots that could be developed on that street. And if so, it would be, everything would be done properly.
So you.
But why they'd have to go, and those houses aren't that old up there.
You have the monies to do it.
I'll have to let them see.
I would, I mean. The other thing is, is you, you tell a guy he can't run the pump.
But that guy's only gonna pay, see, he's gonna go from his house, clear to the manhole.
Is he in Heath or Newark? Heath or Newark?
He's in Newark, oh, he's in Newark.
He's in Newark?
Yeah.
And he has to, does he have to do a pump because he, gravity can't get there? Or, or he, he could get gravity, if you ran the line, mainly he'd have to get gravity.
We'd have to look, we'd have to look at it, we'd have to look at it.
Cause I think you could tell him he can't go do the pump, he has to do gravity and therefore he'd have to run the thing. It costs him more money and then therefore you could offset the cost.
If I bring it up the road to him, I don't know whether he'd need to do the pump, I'd have to.
That's what I'm saying, if it can go gravity by you extending the main, then, and you, you have, you have a tap fee, right?
Are they charged? Are they charged for the use of our sewer?
Yeah.
We read Newark's water meters and then it's charged, then we do our normal sewer.
Yeah, it's a normal rate, whatever. There's agreement years ago because you have Newark water, Heath, Heath sewer and all that kinda stuff.
What the county's saying is, because they're within such a short distance. Uh, uh, they need to check to see if they can go in the city sewer first.
Right.
Because they're like within two hundred feet of, of a.
Right, and that's what I said, you have the power, right now you have the power. You know what I'm saying? And you say, hey, in order to hook on to this, you need to run the main to there to hook on to it, you can, you can literally do that. You can, you can say, you can't run, I don't want the force main that way, you can literally say, you have to run a main up here and set a manhole, and make him pay that cost. If you really wanna do that, you can, you've got the power to do that. If he wants to build sewer, he has to do it, if he wants to build a house.
You mean the whole cost, you talking the whole cost?
The whole cost, you have the power to do that, you have the power to do that.
Well, then the question becomes, is the health department gonna make him do that, or is the health department gonna allow him just to put in a new septic?
Well, like I said, but if he's within so many feet, he can't put in a septic system. You got the power of the city, I tell you, I, I know this, 'cause I, in fact, I've worked in Newark all the time. You have the power right now to get done what you want done, okay? As soon as you let him tie in with just a two inch pump, you've lost all, you'll never get it done.
Well, that's what's happening, that's what's happened already, I mean, there's four homes up there that just.
Yeah.
Where willy nilly.
Right, we did that in Newark for years, and, and now it's come back to bite us in the ass, you know? But now they won't do it, I, there's a case on Mount Vernon Road, you know where Helen's Drive-In was, and, or the, the restaurant and all that kinda stuff, and the little drive-in? They, they want, he wants to get sewer to there, okay? We have a manhole up there, but they spider webbed over to the side, the only way to run it up there is to go out on Mount Vernon Road and run it like, it's like twelve, fifteen feet deep. And run it that way, so we can continue sewer up to that north area and stuff. And Roger won't let him go down and tie in, like you say, down the side and stuff, he said, no, if you're gonna run it, you're gonna run it that way. And so, they're not having sewer, and they can't, they can't run a restaurant out until they do that, so they got the power, they were then, the distance of the sewer, they have to run it. And that's, and he's putting his foot down, you know, it's like, that's gonna happen, and right now you have the power to do that. But as soon as you say, you can do it, just run a pump, then that line will never get extended.
I have no problem with that, Tim, but the only bad part about it is that guy's gonna go, you know what? That house there, and that, you allowed that house do it, you allowed that house to do it, you allowed that house to do it.
That was different administration, that was different times, now it's today, that's all you have to say.
I can do that, I mean, that's.
No, no, you can be a nice guy, you can say, I'll pay the difference between the upgrade of a four inch and stuff like that, figure out the difference in the pipe and the difference that. But not the difference between a pump, difference between the gravity.
The gravity system.
You know, you can do that. And that'd be a lot less.
They're in Newark, and I, so I don't really.
Yeah. They have to conform, I mean, you know.
Gotta comply, right? The health department's telling him that that septic is bad.
Telling them to come to us first, see if we can, I mean, they may allow him, because when I measured that off, it was like three hundred and forty feet to where we wanna run that. So, I mean, I think he's probably got an op- an option, whether to upgrade the septic system or tap on to us. He would rather tap on to us, but if it's gonna cost him a bunch of money, he's probably.
The other thing is.
Great septic system.
Yeah, the other thing, if the septic system's gonna cost him five to ten thousand, or whatever number thousand that is. And say, hey, instead of putting ten thousand in that, put ten thousand towards this, at six, we'll put in six, and we get it done.
Work out a deal, yeah, that's what I kinda told him, I said, you know, let me find out the particulars on this, and then, and then we'll negotiate, and then maybe, and I'll talk to you about it, so. Right now, he's having a septic system pumped until we make a decision and get him an alternative.
Okay, so it is an existing house then, it's not a new.
Leach field isn't working, so basically, he's just pumping the septic tank.
Oh, okay.
And his leach field isn't working, is what, is the drift that I'm getting, so he's gonna have to put in a whole new leak system.
Yeah. And that could be a lot.
Be cheap.
No.
Anything else?
Nope.
Seven seventeen, I'm during.